I'd like to call to order the Hingham School Committee meeting of October 23rd, 2017, at 7:30 PM. And the first item on our agenda is approval of minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on September 25th, 2017.
Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
I just have one quick change under item 5.3.
Ed brought to my attention that we were missing the E in the N-E-A-S-C visiting team in the last sentence, so I will change that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 10th, 2017.
Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Questions and comments? Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. Does anyone have anything not on our agenda they would like to share? Okay, we'll move forward to superintendent's report. And good news.
Yes. Today we've received information about the annual Adams Scholarship letters having arrived. There were eighty-nine students who were identified. And typically, that identification involves looking at the top twenty-five percent of scores on the MCAS in the tenth grade and rewarding those students with information that they have a full scholarship for the tuition at any of the UMass colleges and universities. We always do point out that that's a wonderful honor and it's certainly a great financial benefit to families that choose to take advantage of it, but it is a tuition scholarship. It doesn't include the many fees that also are part of it. Nevertheless, eighty-nine students will be getting a happy letter at home. I had asked Pam to include in your packet the actual letter that the families get. I don't know if it's there. I don't have it in my paper packet, but we'll get it to you if it is. If it is not, that just did come today. And I know you have some news that about the homecoming, so I'll let you talk about that at the time.
Well, I'll wait till the student.
Yes. So I won't mention that here.
Okay. And then we have communications.
Yes. I didn't receive a communication directly from an individual, but sometimes we receive communications indirectly via one of the social media sites. And apparently, last week, there was a lot of chatter about the kindergarten, the age requirement policy. Want to clarify that. But as it was a concern where there was a lot of chatter on a particular day, we certainly will meet with any parent who has a concern or question. And so we do have a meeting scheduled with a person who is involved in, perhaps involved in getting that chatter started. The kindergarten age requirement is very simple, and I don't think it's a policy that is problematic, but we'll discuss that in full. The age requirements for attending school start with... Mr. Healy, welcome.
Dr. Gallo.
Oh, I meant the chair at the end. Sorry.
Welcome.
Mr. Healy is joining us because we have to vote on one of our employment contracts. And by law, we have to have a member of the Board of Selectmen join the school committee for that vote. That will appear a little bit later on the agenda. But getting back to age, we have a policy... Well, first of all, the state has a policy that says all children have to be in attendance in school by September of the year in which they turn six. And so that's a state requirement. And for most kids, that's in grade one. We did modify our policy slightly. That was an age policy for kindergarten and for grade one. And we modified the grade one because we had a number of concerned parents who brought good evidence that sometimes when children are born right on September 1st or 2nd at the beginning of September and have to wait an entire year to attend school, that seems not to be the most appropriate thing for certain kids. So the school committee did vote a new policy for grade one attendance. Kindergarten is a different animal, so to speak, in that it is not required that students attend kindergarten in Massachusetts. It is required that school districts offer a kindergarten program and that there be a free option for this program. And so our kindergarten entrance age is to turn five before September 1st. So as of August 34th, it's been that policy for a long, long time. And many communities have that policy of September 1st, so it's the beginning of a school year. We, as superintendents, many of us would prefer that the state set a very firm policy for a particular date. As I say, many people have September 1st, but not all, and that can cause complications. In any event, the policy simply says that children have to be five before September 1st in order to attend kindergarten. That's all that it says. It doesn't say that they have to attend kindergarten. It simply says that in order to attend kindergarten, you have to have turned five. Doesn't say anything more. So the practice in Hingham has been that that's what we announce. We do have some parents, and we always feel that parents know more about their children than we may know. And so we have some parents each year who would like to opt their children out of kindergarten and allow another year, in other words, before they attend kindergarten. And we have typically not refused those requests. Often, we had recommended against doing that because unfortunately, some parents make that choice for what we as educators consider not to be good reasons. Nevertheless, we honor those parent requests. And there apparently is a concern that that means that you have a two-year gap. In any grade at all, there's a whole year difference in age. And in the case of kindergarten, that whole year can become two years if parents hold a child out for another year. Now, that could be for a very good reason. We can all think of probably some children we know that do need another year of maturity. But sometimes people do that for the reason of, I want my child to be bigger and stronger and more mature and to be a good athlete in high school. Now, we perhaps all would like that for our children, but that's not always the best reason for making a decision. So it's a topic that we will discuss. We discussed it at length when we moved to full-day kindergarten. The number of students that we have that were opting out at the time, while it was probably a higher number than I would have chosen, or I'm making the decisions that the parents have made, it did not seem extraordinarily large in comparison to other communities. Other communities where the numbers were large have taken some steps to, for example, not allow any parent option. And so this is very much an issue where there are two sides and two different sets of concerns that come up. And we will discuss that with parents and make that discussion public if, in fact, we decide that we need to take some steps further on this. So we're meeting, Jamie and I, and Cynthia will be joining us from community outreach. So we're having that meeting later this week. And we'll keep you posted as to whether or not we're going to make any changes. But the policy is the policy. The policy is not the issue. The issue is whether or not we, as a district, should allow some parent choice in the matter of whether or not a child is kept out for an additional year. So more to come on that.
Great. Yes, and I'd just like to add to that that someone, a parent, did come to the administration as our policy for bringing issues ahead, and that was why we took it up and got into the research of it. So student communications... Or do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So student communications. So our student representative, Emma Quilty, could not join us tonight. They have another late soccer game, and she sent her regrets. And she sent me a note, though, to read. So, and she said, "The season is coming to an end within the next month, so make sure I'm present at all future meetings." But if you would like to talk about the high school, you could mention. So here we go. The girls and boys cross-country won the Patriot League championships. The climate club committee is starting up making sure all underclassmen have someone to talk to by assigning them with a small mentor group from upperclassmen. That lip sync battle will be coming up. A group from Guatemala came to our school last week and taught us about their music, dancing, and shared a story about their life before joining their music organization and the orphanage they lived in. And most importantly, homecoming was a success. Starting Friday with a girls volleyball, three to zero win over Quincy. And then Saturday with a win for field hockey, four to three over Whitman Hansen. Girls soccer won seven to two over Duxbury. And there was an unfortunate loss for boys soccer, zero to four against Duxbury, and a very close football game, unfortunately losing thirteen to fourteen to Duxbury as well. On the positive side, the Hingham spirit was shown, and Tables had a very successful time selling town, club, and team swag. Sorry again, and hope to see you guys soon.
Perhaps we could add to the good news in a similar vein, the news about our football team and the special invitation they have.
Yes. So the Thanksgiving game will be, not on Thanksgiving this year, but on Wednesday night at Fenway Park. And there are two games, and Hingham is the second of the two games. And I believe it's general admission tickets. I don't know the price of the ticket. Twenty dollars per person?
Hingham's kickoff will be at 7:45.
Oh, see? Ed knows more than I do.
And for those of you who don't like to drive, there's a movement afoot for some mass transportation for the fans, so stay tuned.
Great.
And where... Do either of you know where the tickets are available?
On MLB.com.
Oh, okay.
And there was also, if anyone subscribes to the Hingham Sports Partnership newsletter, there was a link on their newsletter that I got today, and I'm sure there'll be, as we get closer, there'll be a lot more information about that. But that's very exciting. Okay. So anything else?
Under other communications, we did have a board meeting of the South Shore Collaborative on Friday, the 13th. And as is the law, fairly recent change in the law, information from each board meeting has to be available to the public. And it's information about news since the last board meeting. It's an update on where they stand with respect to the budget and with respect to enrollment. So it's a small packet of information. So it is on your website, and I do have paper copies for the next special education meeting where we have an opportunity to discuss that in more detail, should it be necessary. And we do put this on the website. I just have to remember where we put it on the website if anyone else has an interest. But it's typical, every board meeting, every collaborative in the state needs to share that information. And this is the first board meeting of this year, so it's the first packet that you will get.
Thank you. Okay. New business, 6.1, to act on the ratification of the proposed memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Cafeteria Managers and Food Service Technicians. So we have come to agreement on our negotiations, and Selectman Healy is with us, as Dr. Gallo said, for all employment contracts. We have a member of the Board of Selectmen to join us, and counts as the vote towards the ratification. And Michelle Eyre cannot be here tonight, but so that'll be a seven-person... Consider it a seven-person vote. So Aileen, as Chair of Salary Negotiations, is just gonna do a little summary of where we are, what we agreed to.
So we're very happy that we've been able to reach a memorandum of understanding with the Cafeteria Managers and Food Service Technicians. We think this is a very fair agreement, and it is a three-year agreement, so it will run through June of 2020. The first year, there is a $1 per hour increase across the board because we are trying to keep pace with the changes in the state's minimum wage law. And we want to be paying our people who we value, who do a really great job for us, a fair and reasonable wage in light of those changes. So after that $1 across-the-board increase per hour in years two and three, it will be a 2% across-the-board increase. There has been an implementation in the past of an incentive payment that encouraged the different school cafeterias to reach a percentage of participation of students buying lunches. And so that was already in place, and the various groups have done a great job. There's been a significant increase in the participation and purchases of student lunches. But now we're reaching a level where maybe the growth is being maxed out. And we don't want there to be now a negative penalty because of that. So now we're going to actually start including a maintenance bonus. So if you maintain the level of growth that you achieved, there would be some incentive for that as well, because we're now at a point where we're feeling we could actually start seeing a negative result because they may not be able to continue that great growth that has happened so far. As far as other items in the memorandum of understanding, there was a lot of housekeeping type of stuff about them using portals to report things that they have to report for sick days. We've also added in some language about holidays and personal days, where we've increased some of the personal days and holidays employees will be entitled to, depending on how many days per week and/or how many hours they work. So again, we are really very happy with the quality of work that we get from these people, and we are so happy that we were able to reach what we think is a really fair agreement with them. So if anybody has any questions about the memorandum of understanding, if not, I would make a motion that we vote to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Cafeteria Managers and Food Service Technicians for the years July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2020.
Here's the meeting. Okay. Any further discussion?
I would just point out that it is a three-year contract with this group, and that virtually all of these people are part-time and hourly workers and work typically three to four hours a day. And also that last year, you'll remember during the budget, that we allocated an amount of money for collective bargaining purposes, since we were bargaining with all six of our units for last year, and that the total first-year value of this contract falls within the allowance that we did budget last year.
So, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Ratification done. Thank you, Mr. Healy, for joining us.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
6.2, to receive the South School Improvement Plan for 2017-2018, and an update of the 2016-2017 plan progress. And we have the South School team with us today. So Mayor Eastwood, our principal, will...
And so you see Divine here, Ceece.
Yeah. Ceece. Back with? My dad and I are good friends.
Can you see Ceece if you need some water?
No, thanks.
First of all, I want to thank Ceece. She's just amazing for being here and helping out with the technology.
Do you want me to stand here?
Yeah. And thank all of you for hearing us tonight. It's so great to be here. You all know Ceece Hanlon, who is our technology expert, and we thank Ceece very much. I think she's very worried about this computer. I think it's gonna... This is its last stand, right?
The last stand.
I have a brand-new one in the office, but until we did this, we decided, oh, you're gonna take a chance with a brand-new computer. So it's... This is its swan son. And you probably all know Lori Jacobs, our wonderful assistant principal. I'm so grateful for her being here tonight. And we have a lot of staff members in the audience. It's so nice of them to come out. We have Eugene Bezinski, who's a teacher leader and also a phys ed teacher at our school. We have Dawn Marie Finaki, who's a fifth-grade teacher, also a teacher leader at our school. Kathy LeBlanc, who's a fifth-grade teacher. And Mari Gazio, who's our newest staff member and a second-grade teacher, and she just came on board this year. And also, we're lucky to have our PTO president, Mrs. May. So very fortunate, Carrie May. So one of the things that we always say is, you want to prepare the child for the path, not the path for the child. Although some days, we all would like to prepare that path and make it easier for the child, in the long run, it's not the best thing. So that's our quote. And you'll see a picture there from the first day of school. Very, very cute, everybody getting ready to go inside. It's always a fun day. And I thank Lori for all of these pictures. She's great at taking pictures, and she puts them together in a slideshow every week. For those of you who've been in the front hallway, you see the cute little slideshow every week of South School. So again, I want to thank you all, the school committee, for being here and for everything you do for us, and absolutely the Hingham Public Schools Administration, who all work so hard, some over here, some over there, to help us all out. I don't know how they do it with six schools. Sometimes my head spins with one. And the South School staff, many of them are here, and just everybody else, who always gives it their all. We're so lucky. We have great students, we have great parents, we have great support, incredible community, and phenomenal PTO who does so much. This is a very busy week for our PTO. We have a lot going on, but we're all gonna do great. And at the end of it, we're gonna be excited. I also want to thank our school council members and our school committee liaison of the past, present, and future. So we're just gonna very quickly go through some of the things that we accomplished that we told you about this day last year from '16-'17, and then we'll talk about some initiatives. One of them is Lori's, and it's a great one, for '17-'18. And then just little new twists on ongoing themes that we still have. So under the category of, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, just make it a little bit better. So there's a lot of that going on as well. So our first goal, which is, of course, a very important goal, is to encourage academic excellence for all South School students. And we're very proud of our, we call it TRI, Targeted Reading Instruction, but it's also known as RTI, and it flourishes a great deal. We are very grateful for all the teachers involved in that. And Chrissy Swanson is our reading specialist, and she does a lot to train all the people who are working with the children in this small part of every instruction. Obviously, a lot of reading instruction goes on inside the classroom, but this is a small part, where they go out in flexible groups. And we use teacher anecdote and data to carefully analyze where the children are and certainly help at-risk children, as well as children who need a challenge, and everybody else in between. The children really love it because they're moving around and they get to meet different adults. And I want to give Chrissy a lot of credit because she has trained a lot of people to do the famous dibbles, which is just one little snapshot in the album of South School that, you know, helps us with these flexible groups, as well as everything the teachers have to say. And because she's done that, we have so many people give it that she does it very quickly, and we start RTI very early. So that's a wonderful thing. So the groups are very differentiated. Also, I'm gonna have Lori speak to the next thing, the enhancement of the instructional support intervention team, or you've probably heard the phrase, "Is it?" We have had great enhancement of that over the last year, and Lori sits on that, so I'd like her to speak.
Sure. So one of our special ed teachers, she came from another school district, and she brought a lot of great ideas. So we put our heads together, and we've really worked hard as a team to, like Mary said, enhance this process. So it's really neat to see teachers, specialists, reading specialists, our speech and language, our special ed services, all come together in one room, and it's like a think tank. So it's really been a great process, and I've been fortunate enough to see it grow over the years, first as a classroom teacher and now as an assistant principal. So it's a great thing, not only for our teachers, but also for our students.
Absolutely. And everybody's, you know, many heads are better than one, right? When it comes to students, we're all about teamwork at South School, and that's a big new enhancement that we've had over this past year. And of course, in all our classrooms, there is constant practice of differentiation. Another thing that we do is constantly train the staff. And of course, over this past year and this coming year, we're still working on adopting the Journeys program, and that's gone very swimmingly. Everybody loves it. And also, we like to train people to things like Wilson and Norton Gillingham, as well as social thinking. And we have this year a lot of differentiated instruction planned, just to review and go over that for many staff meetings. Also, I mentioned Journeys already, and we're still very excited, and I know some of you were with us that day when we received our commendation for student growth back on February 1st. It was a snowy day, can't even imagine that right now, when we all went into town, and that was a great, wonderful time. It was so much fun to see people get together and everybody celebrating education, and it was great to hear everybody speak as well. It was a wonderful day. So Goal Two is just as important as Goal One, and with the new HTSS initiative, certainly this goal is gonna be important, is always important across the school district. And we work hard at South School on this as well, to develop students' physical and emotional well-being and awareness of social responsibilities. So you've probably heard of our Buzz character-building program. You've probably seen certain people in this room dressed up as the bee, even at the spelling bee. It's continued to grow and change, and basically, the themes are be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn, and A number one, be kind to the necessary, which I confess that I got from the book Wonder many years ago. And you probably know that that's coming out as a movie this year. So it'll be interesting to see if they do justice to it. But there are many other bees that the children we talk about, that we talk about all the time. Those are the main ones. And last year, we added the Rainbow of Kindness theme, so that each grade level had a color assigned to them, and we've gotten a lot of help from the PTO on that. And, you know, Lori's kind of set that up by color, and it's given them even more of a theme to the kindness, ownership of the whole thing. And it's constantly talked about, being kind to the necessary throughout the day, on the announcements, morning meeting, other discussions. We can't make a lot of changes in the world, but we can certainly teach our children to be kind to each other and make everybody else's day a little bit better than it already was when they came in the door. So that's the thinking behind that. We also have Beehives. If you're not familiar, they're vertical teams. So you have children from grades one through five. I just observed Dawn Marie doing hers the other day, and it's so cute, and they see them right up to fifth grade, and, you know, they get to know each other because it's, you know, children of different ages, and they also get to know other adults in the building, and they do all kinds of things with that. And this year, the theme for that is not only to be kind to the necessary, but how do we be kind to the necessary? We'll get to that in a few minutes. Thanks to Lori, the recycling and the gardening have expanded. We're eating garlic bread in the cafeteria. We make sure everyone has some, so we can breathe on everybody as the day goes on. And many other vegetables, spinach and things like that, that we actually do eat as part of the lunch program. Thanks to our PTO, and Mrs. May, actually, were very instrumental in this. We are now sporting a new field. We have musical instruments, which I will tell you I was very excited about. I saw these at Heritage Plantation and Sandwich and just loved them. And Mrs. May went down and looked at them and said, "Yeah, that would be great." And then I was lying in bed one night, and I said, "Ooh, the neighbors are gonna be really mad because we've got musical instruments." But they are so beautiful. You know, take a ride by someday and just, you know, give them a little tryout, and the music is so soft and so beautiful. I think the neighbors are absolutely loving them. Thanks to the initiative from the high school, where the children came out to help us, I believe it was on April 13th, if I'm not mistaken, they painted a new map, because we had a new surface put at South School a couple of years ago. So we now have a new map of the United States, and we also had Eagle Scout paint a map of the world. So that's always fun. We want lots of different things at recess. And every... We've taken on a different emphasis in the Buzz assemblies last year. October's the welcome one. November honors veterans, and June, thanks families who are leaving. And we have another thing we're doing, and we thank you for our full-time music teacher, who's done a great job getting the school singing. So "You've Got a Friend in Me" is a popular famous one. And then we have this other one that we sing called "Nothing More," and I just... Oh, here's our Rainbow of Kindness.
That was at Field Day.
That was Field Day last year, yep. And Lori and I were being taped to the wall because we did a... And we have another thing we're doing, and we thank you for our full-time music teacher, who's done a great job getting the school singing. So, You've Got a Friend in Me is a popular famous one. And then we have this other one that we sing called Nothing More. And I just, oh, here's our Rainbow of Kindness.
That was at Field Day.
That was Field Day last year, yep. And Lori and I were being taped to the wall because we did a stick-it-to-cancer drive. So, we were being masking. Every child in the building got a piece of tape, and they get to tape us to the wall. It was a lot of fun. Yes. Yep. You have to click right on the, yeah. And then this is the song.
Was it the tape or the slime that Tony and?
The slime was the year before. We were sliming the year before.
Oh, so East School took the slime the next year.
Oh, I guess, yeah. We just were trying to.
We led the way in slime.
Yeah, you were leading.
Now, we're going to do karaoke, and Lori's all excited about that.
Wow.
Here we go. Here's Nothing More.
Here's a sample.
It's having our kindness in. So, I think you get the idea. But when all 500 of them sing it together, this particular day, we just had three classes, it's pretty amazing. And those of you who've been in the room, we sing it for special occasions, especially to say goodbye to the parents because we feel like the fifth grade parents, when they leave, and I think Mrs. Freshman, that's you this year, right? They get sung to serenade, and I think Mrs. Me as well.
Not a dry eye.
So, usually, there's not a dry eye when all 500 of them sing it. And it's just basically what it's all about. We are how we treat each other when the day is done. So, definitely goes to our theme. So, there's our lovely maps and our wonderful instruments that you should try and come and play. They're just great. Okay, so, very important to keep things going with the parents. Let them know everything that's going on. As we all know, that's very difficult, to make sure everything gets out there all the time. So, we work really hard at that. The weekly news letters, the Buzz blasts, thanks to PTO. I also send our principal emails because some people aren't on the PTO list, to make sure everybody knows what's happening. And we love our new families. We welcome them with open arms. And we thank the PTO for the New Families Reception and Tour that we do every year. And of course, we've kept up our focus groups, and we had a great survey this past spring and took data from that to plan for 1718. And of course, safety is very important. It's constantly discussed. Lori works very hard with Officer John, our resource officer, to make sure the protocols are strictly adhered to by all. And we did last December have the active shooter training, I think it was about December 7th. And lockdown protocols are reviewed and practiced. And of course, we constantly make enhancements to the check-in and checkout system. A big shout out to our secretaries, Ann Thompson and Karen Joy, who are always saying, you know, if we move this over there, or we did this, or we did that, or we had a sign in, it would be better. So, we're always being reflective, and of course, Lori and myself, and all of the teachers as well. Everybody's always thinking about that, and we're very grateful for the surveillance equipment that's been added as well, especially on the buses. So, that's been a good thing. All right, so 1718. Here we are. I can't believe we're in 1718. I remember when I was in fifth grade, thinking about how old I'd be at the turn of the century. And here we are at 1718. I could do the math. That's good news. So, the first goal, obviously, is the same, to promote and encourage academic excellence because it's very important. Under the category of, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We want to continue and make better and use reflective teaching with all our successful initiatives. We need to further facilitate the Journeys adoption. A lot of our staff, their goals are to get even deeper into some of the materials that come with Journeys and include those. We're looking at trying to do some staff peer observations. And obviously, teacher training's a big one this year. We want to revisit differentiated instruction and all the new things that are out there. And again, thank you to the PTO. We've got some steam carts coming along that are going to be for classroom and indoor/outdoor recess use. So, that's fantastic. And I should mention too, that Cece has a new initiative with the Chrome carts, that, you know, grade levels have them. So, it's a little easier to borrow them and that kind of thing. So, that's fabulous. Again, students' emotional well-being this year. Definitely continue all successful initiatives. Keep singing, keep learning the songs. I know that Jessie has come up with a new song that she's going to teach. She's keeping it under wraps till the February Buzz Assembly. Oh, even Lori did. I forgot to tell Lori about that. We're enhancing social thinking training. We definitely ascribe to social thinking. Those of you familiar with Michelle Garcia-Winner at South School, so we make sure that our new staff knows about it. And actually, that's going to be one of the presentations at next week's staff meeting. A big thing that we added last year and we're continuing this year is, thanks to Karen Beatty, most of the staff, and Lori, most of the staff has been trained in comm classroom, which if you're not familiar with it, we'd be happy to answer questions about that. And also, yoga for the classroom, which is absolutely fabulous. I was walking through the back of a room the other day, and I could not get over this yoga for the classroom that's happening. It takes one or two minutes. And, you know, it was a fourth grade class, and you could tell they've been writing or doing whatever, whatever she had them up doing, the yoga. There was a sense of calm over the room. They sat right back down, and they were doing whatever they needed to do. We're especially excited about our new kindness library. It's a new twist on being, and we're misspelling that on purpose because the B is our symbol, being kind to the necessary. And in our Beehives this year, as I mentioned earlier, we're really putting an emphasis on kindness. We feel that that's how we can make a difference in the world. And again, grateful to our PTO. I mentioned it to Carrie and Jen Benham this summer. And they said, oh, that's perfect. We'll help you get that library. So, we have over 50 titles in the kindness library. And the flagship title is, you can turn to the next slide, What Does It Mean to Be Kind? It's, if you have grandchildren or young nieces or nephews, I would highly recommend this book. It's just one sentence on each page, but it's things like, being kind means being patient, even when you're in a hurry. Being kind means saying please, thank you, you're welcome, and I'm sorry. So, I think so often, we say to children, you know, you need to be kind, and they might not know what that means. So, every week, we have a theme of the week, and this book was read as a flagship book in the classrooms last week for the Beehive and every teacher, you know, I got to do, thanks to our PTO. I get to be, I guess I'm dating myself when I say Oprah now. I get to be Ellen, I guess, I have to say now. I don't watch much TV. I don't have time. And everybody got a book at the Buzz Assembly last, last week. It was a lot of fun.
You get a book.
You get a book. You get a, everybody got this book. So, we're very excited about it. So, there's also 52 other books, if you want to look at them later. Phenomenal. If you're familiar with Wonder, there's now a child's picture book coming out. You know, it's funny, when I first started teaching, one of my fifth grade partners told me, you know, everybody loves picture books. And I had taught high school history, and I'm looking at her like, sure, they do. You know what I mean? And then I found out very quickly that she was exactly right. And using a picture book, even in a fifth grade classroom in a morning meeting, you see a lot of heads being shaken, is a wonderful thing. So, we have 52 new books, all with the theme of kindness, that we're keeping safe in the office, and people come and borrow them. And this is the picture book that goes with Wonder, and it's absolutely fabulous. This one's called Beautiful Hands. This one's called Pass It On. And you're welcome to come look at these, and there are many other titles. You're welcome to come borrow them and look at them at South School. So, we're very excited about that. So, one first grade teacher already took off with it. This is first grade. Can you believe it? It's not even November. What does it mean to be kind? Being kind means doing kind things for others. The next one. Being kind means saying nice words and making new friends. What does it mean to be kind? Being kind means making friends when new people come in and they don't have a friend. So, that's fantastic. And I'll let Lori tell about our new initiative, the Kindness Rocks Project.
So, as Mary said, we like to put a new twist on our kindness theme because it's one thing to memorize our kind themes and our kind phrases, but we need to put them into action and remember what they, what they actually mean. And like she said, it's easy to say be kind to someone, but what does that mean? So, this year, it all kind of happened with, by accident, but on purpose too. I don't know if you've heard of the Kindness Rocks Project, which actually started on a beach on the Cape. And this woman left a painted rock with a message on a beach for someone else, and someone else found it. And then the whole thing took off, and now it's kind of spread around the world. So, actually, Ann Thompson, our secretary, she knows how I love this stuff. So, she like dangled it in front of me this summer and said, Lori, I have a project for you. And then I was like, oh, I'm totally into this. We're going to do this project. And then, after school had started, got busy, and I was waiting to get it going, a student told Mrs. Eastwood about it.
Put a letter in my box.
Put a letter in her mailbox. About the kindness rocks project. And I, she handed it to me, and I went directly to that student, and I said, you just made my day. This is exactly what I wanted to do. So, this family went to Duxbury Beach and, maybe I shouldn't say this on TV, collected 580 rocks for our school.
Well, maybe if we had beat them in football, then that would.
So, talk about being kind. They did that in one Saturday afternoon. And delivered them to, delivered them to our loading dock. And so, now we have a rock for every single person in South School to paint. And what the plan is to do is then make a walkway in front of the school. And at the end of the year, everyone can take a rock, and then they can spread their kindness anywhere they want to spread it. So, we're really excited about that, and I think that will be a great twist to our kindness.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. And here, just some examples. Yes. You do see them at Duxbury.
Is that you guys?
No, not yet.
And this, those are some examples?
Yep. Yeah, so.
All right. And, you know, this is just, again, we're constantly working at increasing parental awareness. And we, one of the things that came out in our survey, actually, our spring survey was very positive. And all of our, many of our parents seemed very, very happy. But one of the things they said, and this is something I've been accused of all my life, is that maybe I used too many words. And I'm okay with that. So, one of the things that I did in the new office notes, and those of you who are South School parents, is now it's just like our Friday note staff. It's dark if it's brand new. And if it's old, I like to leave it in there because we constantly get questions about things that are there, so you can kind of refer back. So, that's been kind of well-received. I think people are happy with that. They know they can just, because people have so much to read nowadays. I totally understand, myself included. So, we keep up with all of the other things. The back-to-school nights went swimmingly well this year. And one thing we're adding, and Mr. B's part of this, we thank him and Mrs. Hanlon as well, we're going to add a specialist corner to the newsletter because parents said, gee, we'd like to know more about what they're doing in specials. And I thought, well, what a great idea. So, just, this is just an example of what the Spanish teacher's going to be doing. She's going to be talking about Mayan vases that we use for chocolate drinks. I do think that would be high interest in the Spanish class. It's high interest with me. And basically, also, this is very similar, just again, keeping up all those things. We're looking forward to our South School Social on the 4th, which a lot of families say they get to know one another. I think that's super important for new families to feel welcome and feel that they know each other. And we have our Big Talent Nights too that we do, and try for immediately and timely communication. And we're very thrilled to have Fly South and Homework Heroes, which are after-school programs, and the Box Program, which is in the morning, which again, was started by Mrs. Me. And that's right up my alley because I like to work out first thing in the morning. So, the kids, some kids come to school and they work out first thing in the morning, and we've had that for many years, and it's great. We're very pleased with a lot of physical plant enhancements, working on the, revising the handbook as always. Lori's always working on enhancing lockdown procedures and whatever else we need for different situations, and working with Officer John in the security area for lessons on pedestrian safety and so forth. And just finally, these are our SMART goals for, you saw them last year because they're two-year goals. And basically, number one is to support differentiated and tiered instruction in all academics. And I would probably add to that, and also in emotional social, facilitate Journeys being adopted, recognize school-wide activities, being mindful of consolidation. We really try to work on that. That's probably the one we're not as successful with because you always want to add new things, and you don't think about, gee, what can we take away? So, there's not too much. Because everybody needs a lot of ritual and a little bit of novelty. So, we're trying to find that balance, and that's what that goal's all about. And firmly believe in the sound mind and the healthy body by supporting the physical well-being of students. And we have all things like comm classroom and yoga for the classroom, and a wonderful phys ed teacher in Mr. B. And everybody else tries to get up and moving. I know you all use Go Noodle in your classrooms and all kinds of things like that because we all can't just sit forever and ever and ever. We need to be up and moving and respecting learning styles and, you know, reaching every child. So, it does take a village to prepare the child for the path, and there's one more slide. And our South Village continues to work very hard to respect all learners while preparing them for the path. And I am truly grateful and honored to be principal, and I am very, very fortunate. I have a wonderful community, a wonderful assistant principal, and outstanding staff members who really go above and beyond all the time. And I just feel really lucky. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
I just want to say that, you know, what a great presentation. You guys speak with so much passion that's contagious. Keep it up with the great work. I have many positive feedback. It's great that Liza mentioned that East is taking one of the activities to do fundraising. And I was, I attended Foster PTO a couple of weeks ago. And they are also taking one of the activities that you're not doing this year to do a fundraiser. So, lead on.
And we've stolen plenty from them over the years. Believe me, we all share. We all collaborate. We all cooperate. We all sit around and go, that's a great idea. I'm going to try that. You mind if I try that? No, we definitely have taken many pages out of their books as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just, what's Go Noodle? Oh, Go Noodle. Could someone like, is someone in the audience like to join us? Kathy?
So, it's a website you can go to, and they have quick little break breaks, music and get up and move or dance for a minute and come back down, and it's just the right amount of energy to expend, and then it focuses you back in.
It's great for transitions, right?
Yeah.
It really is.
Yep. Can learn some good dance moves too.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Can I have a question? What are, what makes up a steam cart?
Oh, I'm going to let Carrie answer this because she ordered them, right?
Yeah, so it's science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. And so, we worked with Katie Roberts, and she suggested a lot of building materials. So, it's a lot of things that Legos connect, things like that, and arts. And so, we have carts built, and we have everything ordered, and we've been able to put it together. Then we get them outside for recess, so we haven't really eaten them yet, but.
The good news is, I don't think we've had an indoor recess. Right. Because I think it's going to rain just in time.
So, it's an indoor recess?
Yeah.
I think it's going to rain just in time for our fun run though, of course. I don't have good weather luck. My friends know that about me.
Well, and I'd just like to congratulate you again on being named a commendation school for last year. And I had the honor of joining them at the State House for the ceremony. And that was a thrill because I know you worked very hard. And to be recognized, your whole team worked very hard. And to be recognized with a select number of schools from all across the Commonwealth. It was my honor to accompany you, and I was in the background. And it was a joy to see everyone from Hingham get recognized. So, congratulations on that.
We were very excited. And Plum River was recognized alongside of us, which was very nice. And, you know, if the children are learning and they're happy, there's not much more than that, right?
Yep. That's what makes them success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Cece. It's a really old computer. It's on last slide. It's like a jalopy, right?
Good job. Tell them that.
It's an old friend, though.
Now, 6.3, to receive preliminary information about Spring 2017 MCAS scores. Just this week, no, last week, last week. It's been a long week. Last week, the state unveiled MCAS scores across the state for a brand-new test. And on November 20th, and it's the same time every year, we will have a more in-depth analysis of MCAS scores for Hingham. But tonight, we wanted to just give a little summary of what was announced from the state. So, we'll let Jamie cover that.
Yes. Hello. So, last week, on Wednesday morning, the embargo was lifted on the performance data from last spring's Next Generation MCAS assessment. And a couple of sort of things to note, there were some headlines that accompanied the release that were, I think in my estimation, a little unfortunate. When you speak from a statewide perspective, about 50% of the students across the Commonwealth have been found to either be meeting or exceeding the expectations on this new assessment. That is not true of Hingham. So, if you go and look at our performance, we do have a slight decrease in performance, but it's not dropped to 50% of proficiency. So, I want to make that clear. The other piece that is important to note is, the MCAS is not a normed reference exam. It's actually a criteria reference exam. So, over the summer, we had. So over the summer, we had 150 educators from across the Commonwealth who got together with the Department of Education and established sort of the metrics for each grade's assessment. So they said, so in order to be proficient or to meet the expectation of third grade, here are those skills that have to be present. And so that 50% wasn't sort of an average or the mean, right? That 50% was when they established sort of the expectation for success in the next grade. Only about half of the students across the Commonwealth actually made that performance. And there's one of the headlines there. I want to be really clear that it is not our philosophy, as the second headline reads, to shift focus to test preparation. We feel strongly that good teaching, good instruction, regardless of the way the question is presented, our students will be able to perform well. And one of our roles is to teach them multiple ways to sort of show their knowledge on such assessments. So I just want to put that in a little bit of context. This is a new assessment. So it's actually not helpful to sort of go back and compare against previous year's performance because it is a fundamentally new exam. I will also note that the spring of 2019 will be when the MCAS Next Generation rolls out to our 10th grade. So that would be last year's 8th grade who would have taken the MCAS Next Generation online. And so when they're 10th graders, right, they'll also have the online assessment. And that's why it was designed as a sort of legacy sunsetting of the 10th grade exams. So we do have, and all the preliminary data has been posted to the Department of Education's website. We are meeting tomorrow with our department directors to actually unpack our results and sort of set up a strategy for unpacking these results. This, again, is the first time we have administered the Next Generation assessment. And so we'll need a bit of time to unpack those results and understand what they're telling us. And also understand the new information that's now going to be coming to us, which will look slightly different. In that vein, we anticipate tomorrow for Measure Progress to actually drop off the test, the score reports for families. So this week, they will be distributed back to the schools. That will then pack them in envelopes, get them ready for the mailing that we hope to get sent out on Friday. But each principal will be communicating to their school, the parent population, of when the parents can expect to receive their score reports. So that might, the timeline might look different across the six schools. But we want to be really clear that each school will receive a communication from their principal, letting the parents know when they should expect to receive their score reports, as well as a memo from the acting commissioner, Jeff Wolfson, that explains not only the new test, but also how to interpret the score reports. And it includes a frequently asked question document that the state has prepared. In our communication, in principals' communication, actually, to the families, talking about testing option for this spring, we also included for our families at that time, links to the state website for parents to learn more about the new assessment. Also, there's an interactive parent guide. And we also gave the link to the Pearson Success Net so parents could actually see some of the samples exams. So they would know sort of the expectation and how the tests are designed. So there'll be much more to come relative to our performance on the Next Generation MCAS assessment. But given the headline, we thought, I wanted to give you a little bit of context that, A, that those stories, statewide stories, are not reflective of our performance. And actually, when compared against our benchmark communities, we actually performed quite well. So I look forward to presenting that information to you in much more in-depth, as well as the performance of our subgroups, both in special education and high-needs, on November 20th.
I should ask one random, sort of neither here nor there question. But so you said the principals will be sending out information about the scores that are to come. So say your kid moved schools. Which principal does that come from?
So it always goes to the school where they attend. We've gotten some questions about that. And just so we're on TV, I want to clarify. If you were a 5th grader last year and you're now in the 6th grade, the middle school will be sending home your score report. And for last year's 8th graders, the high school will be sending home your score reports. So it goes to where the students are enrolled, not where they were presently attending.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we split those out when we get them. So we know where they go.
So have you or the principals seen the format of what these individual students?
We have. Yep.
And is it similar to the old, that it shows you what kind of subject matter or the purpose of the question, like what educational purpose the question was asking?
It goes by standard cluster. So for example, in math, it'll tell you a number, you know, numbers and operations based on, right? It'll tell you how the student performed on those types of questions, going back to the standards. But they don't do, we're not getting the same item level and data like we used to, right? It's more grouped by cluster.
Okay.
So geometry.
They don't tell you, like, okay, you got three out of four of that cluster correct? Do they?
From, no, they do. But it's not broken down into questions. It'll sort of show, so here is the, it'll show a little bar of like proportionally to how many questions were on, let's say, geometry. It'll show you how well that child did in that strand. But it is broken down by strand.
And if parents have questions about how to read their individual, they should contact their schools?
Their schools, please. Yes. There's also, again, a lot, because this is a rollout across the entire state, the state has committed a significant amount of resources for our families across the Commonwealth to really understand what it's saying. Because there is an ethical responsibility of ours to make sure that parents understand. But if any questions or concerns, they can let us know. Or they can also reach out to the state or check out the state, the resources that we've already provided on the state websites. But we're more than happy to help as well.
And again, this is new for everyone.
Everyone, yes.
So we will see what we get in the mail. Okay. Thank you.
And the high school, of course, did the, you know, legacy MCAS instead of the old MCAS. And those results were excellent, as they have been all along. And so those are pretty easy to understand.
Good. All right. So we look forward to November 20th. When you have had an opportunity to actually study.
Unpack them, yes.
Thank you. 6.4, to discuss mask resolutions for the MASSS Conference on November 1st and act as appropriate. So mask is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And the organization establishes resolutions that delegates from each town go to vote. And then these are the issues that mask will basically lobby for on Beacon Hill. In the past, we have sent a delegate. We don't have someone from our committee who's available to attend the day of the delegate assembly. And so what we wanted to do was, since we cannot, we're not going to participate, I thought it'd be productive if we had a discussion about the seven resolutions and to understand from the staff of how those issues pertain, you know, what are, how do they relate to Hingham specifically? And then if we feel that there is an issue that we are passionate about, we can then establish our own statement on it. And Carlos is our legislative aide. And that we can then share that with our legislators on Beacon Hill directly from the Hingham perspective, as opposed to just casting a vote and being part of the mask in general. But still, if we feel there's something we want to have our voice heard about, we can still exercise that voice. So...
So each of us at the central office will have a couple of words about each of these seven.
That would be great. So resolution number one is regarding changing the enrollment date for Chapter 70 funds. And normally, districts report peak enrollment.
It's probably October 1.
October 1. But that, and this was brought forward by Framingham, so they are a much larger community than us. But since they have frequent move-ins and variation in their enrollment, they were requesting that the reporting date get moved to March 1st. So it's closer to their budgeting, or closer to the time when the state provides state funds, when they inform towns of the state funds. So how would moving the enrollment date to March 15th impact?
Well, it wouldn't impact us very much because our enrollment from the beginning of the year, throughout the year, is a very stable one. We have very little change, one way or the other. But there are communities, particularly some communities that are smaller, and communities that are larger but that may have a large influx of students that come after the year has begun. Particularly, children that may be, children that are not native English speakers and for whom the dollar allocation per student would be higher because of how the foundation formally works. So it's not a big deal for us. And, you know, if I were voting on this, I probably would support it because I know it's important to some of the folks. The only caution that I would have and the hope I would have is that this March date information is used only for the foundation budget. The October 1 count is what we've always used. And it's good for looking at longitudinal studies. And as it is, that information is always a year and a half or so behind. So if this were for some measurement other than distribution of Chapter 70 funds, I would think that we would be negatively impacted in things being further behind than they ever were. And also, sending in information early in the year, such as October 1, is helpful in terms of the overall budget information. Because we start out by districts earlier than the state does. And so it doesn't have much impact. It's not something that I would think that we need to be passionate about, but rather collaborative if it's important to other communities.
Anybody have questions? All right. So resolution number two is to have a reform of circuit breaker funding. And currently, the special ed circuit breaker program only allows districts to claim extraordinary relief when claimable special education costs exceed 125% of the year's claimed cost. And since these special education costs are rising, they want to, mask wants to support legislation that will support the reformed circuit breaker funding and support the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So Liz, are you going to?
This is another Framingham School Committee that one, they were busy.
Yes.
The chair is from Framingham.
The chair of the resolutions committee?
The chair of the mask this year.
Oh, okay.
The president, yeah. That is right.
Hello. Thank you. So just, circuit breaker, just so you remember, is going to be a percentage above the foundation amount that the state will reimburse towns for a share of the special education costs. So the foundation budget is approximately $41,000, slightly more than that, in that range. So that the school districts would bear that first chunk, if you will, of the budget exclusively. And then anything above that foundation amount, it's hoped to be reimbursed by up to 75%. So the 125% really deals with the extraordinary relief claim, which is not going to be very, a typical occurrence for Hingham. It's a rare occurrence that you reach that cap of the 125%. What seems to be more impactful would be if a resolution could actually commit to the 75% in theory reimbursement rate that districts receive back. For example, this year, we received a few weeks ago, and note that we were not going to be budgeted for the 75%. I believe it was budgeted for 72%. So we will be picking up the cost of that amount, which is in the $70,000 range. So in terms of the extraordinary relief, it's not really too much of a Hingham concern, but the general circuit breaker reimbursement process always is.
And for small communities, they almost would never reach the 125%. So it's a small amount of money that's budgeted to be allocated to communities, but relatively few of them, if they're small communities, ever get to have any opportunity to claim that.
And I will note that we do have, for unusual situations like move-ins, we also do have the fund, the special education fund, that we are fortunate enough to have.
The resolution really should be talking about fully funding.
Yes.
Circuit breaker obligation, rather than trying to do the extraordinary.
Parcel it out. Exactly.
Liz, tell me again, 125%, I'm with you with the foundation, with the circuit breaker. 125% of what?
So of the costs from the prior year. So that there's actually a two-pronged claiming process of circuit breaker. The first one, which is due earlier, looks at those extraordinary relief claims to process. And then the other one is due probably around July 4th or so, which deals with the more typical reimbursement procedure.
Well, as an example, if 125% is the threshold off the top of your head, what was our percentage last year?
Percentage of what?
That's my question. The formula, so in last school year, if the amount that we got back in circuit breaker reimbursement, right? So let's say, let's just play, by year, we got $100,000 back from circuit breaker. If in the next year, our costs exceed 125% of what we claimed, then we're eligible for extraordinary relief. So that means that something extraordinary has happened. There's been a new placement. Or your costs have risen so significantly that the state can step in early in the year and give you another round of reimbursement to cover up that difference. Does that make sense? It's 120% of the previous fiscal year's total take.
Yeah.
So it's about a million dollars?
If your $3 million is what your spend on those types of, you know, circuit breaker items would be, you know, if they were to exceed $3,750,000, right? I mean, that's 25% increase.
In the next year, you would be eligible for some supplemental relief.
You would go through the application process and they would determine how much extra you might get.
And then is that calculated into, that's totally separate then about what, then you would go?
It is totally separate. Yeah. It's a supplemental, yeah. It's on top of it.
That's right.
So this would really help Hingham since we have also the savings.
Yeah, we're fairly stable. I mean, 25% is really a significant increase for us, you know? And we have gone forward in previous years and set up that reserve fund, you know, should we get hit with that. I mean, you know, it's possible that it could happen. I mean, we had, several years back, we had $500,000. And that still would not have hit the 25% threshold. So I mean, the suggestion, as Liz mentioned, was if they just funded us at the 75% rate, that would be exceptional. We would be happy. That would be good for us.
And we would know about it and could plan on it. 125% is the threshold for an application, but it's not a guarantee that you would get that. Whereas, in theory, the circuit breaker formula allocation is something that you should get. And for early on, we didn't get it all every year. But the last several years, we really, they funded it well. And we knew about that early and we could plan on it as part of the budget, and that was great. But because of the budget shortfall last year, they told us early not to expect the full 75 this year.
Liz, this, to me, seems like a resolution that we should support it for no other reason to give our support to towns that are in positions to be heard by this.
Right. But we also should support their funding, the whole thing, for every town to get what it needs.
Thank you. Okay. Great.
Thanks, Liz.
So resolution number three is regarding supporting litigation for fair school finance. And there was a lawsuit, McDuffie versus Driscoll, which the Massachusetts Supreme Court ruled that the Commonwealth is obliged to provide financial assistance to assure that there would be an adequate level of support for the public schools. And that, as I understand, was then why ed reform happened in 1993. And how the Chapter 70 Foundation Budget Formula was founded. So... So, there are several of the larger cities with lower income people have been, and I've heard of Brockton and some others, have been talking the last two years, that maybe it's time for another lawsuit because there's such a difference of, they've lost so many state funds, so much funding because of the formula and also the budgets. So, this resolution is for MAS to reassess the need for a new litigation, to assess the viability of a lawsuit, to secure the additional funding for these, for these towns, join with other parties who would be interested in filing such a lawsuit, and have the board of directors authorize the use of reserves of the association to help underwrite the cost of the litigation. So, that, this is a pretty bold resolution. Do you have any wisdom on the, the history of this, or just even a personal opinion? I mean, this isn't something that really impacts Hingham.
No, no, I mean, the history, I mean, if it dates back to 1993, and I think maybe around 2004 might have been the first time that they litigated. I mean, I looked it up on the internet to see, you know, to see when did the second, when did the Supreme Court give that opinion, and then leave it open saying, we'd be happy to hear it again. I mean, from a, from a net school spending point of view, which is really where this is tied to, net school spending is a combination of the municipal contribution, the contribution any town or city would make, you know, combined with the state aid that you get. And the combination of those two equals required net school spending. And, I mean, Hingham, we're always well above required net school spending, you know. And then, also, from, from a foundation budget standpoint, I check the 70, usually targets about 17.5%. That's because we're, we're one of the top communities. So, that's about all we'll ever get, a 17.5% versus some other communities that may be at 50 or 60%. So, we don't have any issues with net school spending. Well, while this one is, you know, it's admirable, it's saying, do we, do you want to sign up and tell us we should go litigate, or we should look and see if we should litigate, you know, what is the, and assess, what is the level of success that we might have? And then, you know, and then, you know, use our reserves to go forward to sort of organize this litigation. So, I think that's what it comes down to, you know, it's, it's a matter of, do you want to direct your board to, from a Hingham perspective anyways, do you want to direct the board to take their time on the issue and to use their funds to potentially try to go back to litigate so that they eventually get all the money that they're supposed to get to support students? I think you'd be better off, you know, promoting the idea of using the foundation budget review to get full funding. So, they, so they're integrally connected, but, you know, do you want to branch off and use your time and money on this issue? So, while I could support it, I'm the financial person, so I would say, you know, where's the best bank for the dollar at this point?
So, just for my information, the, the board of directors of MAS, if this passed, would be authorized to use their reserves to underwrite the cost, but then, the rest of the cost would be carried by the school districts that joined in the lawsuit?
I, I don't know that detail for sure, but that's, it sounded as they, they would get other interested parties and that they would all jointly sort of go forward and...
Because that's not going to be cheap.
No, no, no litigation will be cheap.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how big this board's reserves are.
Yeah, I don't know either, but, yeah, I just thought, I thought it was interesting of the, now there's movement for potential of another lawsuit.
So, it's another framing him?
Yes, it was another. Yeah, the, the larger urban communities are feeling the pressure of costs. So, then, resolution number four is regarding privatization of public education and the oversight of public schools, including small and regional districts. And I haven't put this in a while, so I apologize.
So, I can tell you a little bit about it here?
That would be great.
Yeah, so, last spring, the voters of the Commonwealth overwhelmingly rejected the expansion of the charter school movement in the Commonwealth. And so, as a result of that, the charter school, sort of proponents of charter schools have been exploring alternative ways to get the money into the hands of parents, right, to sort of, in terms of school choice, i.e. school vouchers. So, if you, child attends a private school, then a proportion of the money that would come to the district would then be appropriated out through a voucher program. And so, this resolution is sort of taking a stand against the, the use of public funds in private enterprise, essentially. And so, while the impact is unknown, because this is sort of a preemptive resolution to sort of prevent any such legislation from happening, so I want to be really clear, this hasn't happened, right? The voters of the Commonwealth rejected that last spring. But since that, that was rejected, there has been movement afoot in the charter, charter school community to find alternative ways of funding school privatization. And sort of, this is a, sort of, sort of a statement on a philosophical, that I would suggest that the committee support. Because it, while it doesn't impact us directly, it would, in the long run, if such measures went into effect.
Okay. Anyone have thoughts or? We can, we can revisit whenever we want, but it's, it's good to know what issues are being discussed out there.
The next one's also mine, if you want me to take that, too.
Go for it.
Okay.
So, resolution number five is regarding the use of federal funds.
Yes. So, as you know, one of the roles of the State Department of Education is to serve as a funding mechanism from the Federal Department of Education to then give the money to the local education agencies. And, and what happens is when they write their federal grants, for example, the IDEA Special Education Grant, the Title I Grant, for example, the state will sort of off the top, take sort of administrative costs out of the federal funds that they receive and then administer back to school districts. And so, this resolution is looking for sort of some restriction on the amount that can be used for those purposes. And while there are some restrictions in place relative to how much, you know, overhead you can charge, or how many indirect, how much indirect costs you can charge, the, because of the state of the, of the budget across the Commonwealth, the importance of federal, of those federal dollars are more critical than ever. And to see portions of that money being siphoned off to the State Department of Education to quasi-administer our money for us, I think that's where that resolution's coming from. And so, again, it's, we're, we're not sort of seeing a significant portion of the money, again, because there are some caps in place, but this is talking about, to the extent possible, really re-urging, right, that we, we do that only when needed and not to the detriment of the districts who actually get the money. Because they're sort of the middleman, right, between the federal government and the local districts. And they take administrative fees off the top of that money.
Do they do anything? I mean, do they earn their, but if the money's coming from the federal government, it's just like the check gets written to the state and then they have to, like, divvy it up? But is that it? That's all they're doing?
Well, they also do, like, similar to the local school districts, when we receive, we have to do a grant application and then write an end-of-the-year report and sort of do monthly tracking and updating. So, they have the same responsibilities to the federal government. And so, part of the money that they sort of take off is to then pay the administrative costs of actually running the grant. I mean, it's legitimate, and they're not suggesting that what they're doing is, you know, unlawful or, you know, sneaky. It's just, the, what MAS is trying to say is, we need that money.
Yeah.
Right, more than you sitting in an office telling us how to spend it. Like, we want it to actually have it ourselves, which I think is a, is a reasonable point. But again, it's not happening to an unreasonable extent. But, but given the state of the budget across Commonwealth, there, we need all the money that we can get.
And the state would argue that in the same way that we're frustrated that we don't get the amount of money from the state that we think we need and that we provide equitable and fair education, that the Department of Education would tell you that they, too, don't get the amount of money that they need to meet all of the expectations of the federal government, and this is one of those. And, and that's fact, that they've had many layoffs in, in the same way that communities have had either layoffs or reductions in service levels. So, it's, you know, it's a, it's a legitimate concern, but it's one of those concerns you feel without perhaps knowing all the, all the background.
Is this the only way the DESE is funded, or is there state funding?
Well, there is state funding, but their state funding has been cut back, just as ours has. And so, they'll tell you they have x fewer employees than they had years ago, and yet they were expected to do more and, you know, same kinds of things that we would say.
So, is there a possibility that the DESE would be smaller because of this?
It is smaller.
It is.
Yeah, it is smaller than it was.
In a real way?
They still don't talk to each other.
You're hopeful about that.
There's fewer offices that still don't talk to each other, but, you know.
But many years ago, before DESE had so many mandates, some of which they require and some come from the federal government, actually, they had regional service centers. So, so you had a DESE office in, I don't know if it was by county or just some sort of reason, and they were in the business of providing more resources and information and help. Now, they're mainly in the business of ensuring that mandates, whether theirs or others, are met. So, the, the next one is the foundation budget, which, of course, we've all supported in the past, and I think that it, it really is the one of all of these that we all need to get behind again. In 2015, there was a Foundation Budget Review Committee, came forth with a number of recommendations, tried to update some of the pieces of the formula, reflecting more reasonable costs for children who are English language learners, more reasonable costs allocated for special education, for socio-economically deprived children and that kind of thing. So, the formula's improved in those ways, still wasn't really where it was in terms of realistic costs, but that formula, despite a lot of urging, has not yet been fully implemented. And so, this is one that I think we continue to need, to need to all get behind. And, and some minds, political minds, will tell us that our best chance of success in getting more funding as educators really is around asking for fewer individual things and making a good case for those and, and keep reminding, when we ask for the many things that we need, it often falls on deaf ears because it's just, it's just too much. So, here's one of those things that we do need to get behind. And so, in terms of thinking about this whole exercise of looking at these resolutions, which are only that, resolutions that MASC has to bring attention to matters, we can directly influence this through our legislative interventions and advocating. So, this is, this is a good one. And, and this is from the MS, MASC Board of Directors as well, so it does reflect their, their greater thinking. And Liz has the last one.
And the last one, resolution seven, is regarding the Affordable Care Act and Medicaid and the risks of changes from the federal level, correct? And potentially loss of healthcare dollars that support specially, special needs students to fund education programs.
Yeah, so the argument is with Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act being...
Cut back and minimized, that some school districts will face repercussions in loss of Medicaid funds. So, Hingham does have a small percentage of cases where we are reimbursed a small amount for direct service therapy-related items, which is claimed quarterly and then returned by the town. We don't have a great deal of students who we receive back funds, but there would be a small impact on sort of cutting down on that Affordable Care Act.
And I might add, those funds go directly to the town, they don't come to the school.
Okay.
Okay, so, so we, we get the reimbursements, we notify Gene, they get an electronic transmission, so they go into the found, the town's general fund.
Do we have services covered by state healthcare, so that if even, or is that, would that be all the same with Medicaid?
Under MAS health, yes. We identify the students who have MAS health, and we seek parents' permission to allow that information sharing, which is actually a new caveat about, probably about 10 years or so ago, that we have to get sort of under HIPAA the, the signed consent from the parents to share the money with the state in order to get that back. Prior to that, it used to be a free flow of information without that requirement.
And is that a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement?
No, it's a very small percentage. I don't know the exact percentage, do you, John?
It depends on the service.
Yeah, I don't know the percentage.
It's a small amount across the district, very small.
For, you know, the yearly, I think we may be up around the $60,000 or $70,000 a year for the town.
Total.
Total.
Of Medicaid reimbursements. That would be for the services as well as the administrative overhead costs as well.
Because depending on what happens with the federal government, MAS health could be significantly impacted as well.
Correct.
So, that's why I just wanted to get a sense of where we are for any potential significant changes in healthcare funding. Anybody else have questions? Does anybody have a feeling of anything in particular we want to advocate to our legislators? We've, we have previously advocated about the Foundation Budget Review Commission, but, or anything that's not on this list that, because we should, you know, just keep on top of those issues? I know there was recently, in the past two weeks, there was an article about potentially legislating recess time, which personally, I think is a little overkill. Yeah, that the legislature would, by law, require 20 minutes of recess for, which we already do, more. But the thought of the legislators up on Beacon Hill making a decision about that, to me, is a bit much.
Well, there's also the, the starting time piece of legislation that's coming along, and, you know, that would have a tremendous impact on many communities in terms of transportation costs and all of those kinds of things, as well as the things that you might think would be impacted.
Okay.
If the state could find a way to get the foundation, the budget, foundation budget review commissions, you know, recommendations proposed, I mean, that's a lot of money. They would find that it would come to the schools, that's, that's our best bet.
And the, and the circuit breaker, same thing.
Right.
Same argument. Give us what we were promised, you know, and let the federal government chip in because, you know, they were supposed to be providing something like 41% of special education. And, and while IDEA is a piece of that, and that is a significant grant, it's nowhere near 41% that they were supposed to be providing, so.
It's an uncertain time. I was telling, we were saying earlier that the President, the administration just cut or repealed almost 70-plus Office of Civil Rights Dear Colleagues Protections for people with disabilities across the nation. And so, we're actually forwarding that on to our CPAC to let them know to possibly advocate for that. So, President Trump again sort of cut, or they eliminated, the Department of Education eliminated 70-plus Dear Colleagues Statements about issues such as FAP and service delivery without any consultation from the advocacy movement in special education. So, there's changes afoot. So, that, so as we think about these things, right, there is some variability going on in what will happen in Washington that would possibly have implications across the, across the country, but, more to come, but that was just over the weekend.
The Supreme Court ruling doesn't...
So, the Office of Civil Rights...
I was going to say Trump, I shouldn't say that. It doesn't pre, or...
Trump, Trump.
Yeah.
Doesn't Trump?
You know what you mean.
No, it does, right? So, there were...
Protect those.
They argue that some of, they were arbitrary and sort of old and out of, out of use. And so, they went through a cleanup phase, and again, '72, I believe, actual OCR, Dear Colleague clarifications or directives to sort of implement a procedure or policy a certain way were removed. And so, most of the disability advocates are now trying to study those.
I don't think it was OCR, it was OSRS.
Carrie, you want to... Carrie, you want to just-
Fair enough. So there was a, so the Office for Special Education and Rehabilitative Services, OSERS. And there was a couple of OCR ones, too. But sort of essentially, when they want to clarify a piece of policy, they'll issue a Dear Colleague letter that sort of goes out to everybody and sort of says, "This is what we mean when we say X, Y, Z." And again, from OSERS, was it '72? Do you remember the number? Seventy-two were eliminated by the administration.
They only packed somebody.
That's right. So they are trying to, the advocacy groups on national level are trying to understand now what those were and what real implications could come, right, with those repeals. But we were gonna let our CPAC know to just put them on notice that we just got, I just got word over the weekend from a sort of policy person that I know in DC saying, "Heads up. This just hit us." And we're sort of trying to understand what it means. But that goes in line with the Medicaid challenges and sort of some of the other pieces that we're seeing on a national level.
Well, that's something we can watch and then even send word to our congressmen and senators, not just Beacon Hill people. Okay, thanks for the notice.
We'll keep you abreast.
Okay, great. Thank you. 6.5, to recognize One America as a new pilot club at Hingham High School for operation to commence during the school year 2017, 2018 without a paid advisor. This one popped up right when we were approving clubs last week, or last meeting. And when we saw the list, then we heard that this was happening at the same time, and we couldn't change the agenda, so.
And during the flurry of hurricanes. And it's really a fundraising kind of initiative, so good for kids to be interested in that.
John, do you want to do the summary of this?
And talking to Rick, the One America Club, I mean, it was initially built for the hurricane in Texas. And forget their names now, Hari and Irma, you know, and then Irma. But I asked Rick, I said, "Are they limited just to these events?" And he says, "Well, I thought that they'd probably want to keep it in place for other disasters." So, you know, that's where I added, I think it's to raise awareness for people affected by disasters. You know, and the information is really attached on the club. So they want to do some fundraising and, you know, that, this student activity account is really necessary for that, because whatever fundraising they do can get deposited into the account. And then when they make an appropriate donation, it comes from the student activity account. So this seems like a very, you need the student activity account for this activity.
And the One America appeal is the organization led by all the living ex-presidents of the United States, as opposed to the Red Cross? Because there's also a Red Cross club that's, but this is distinct to that One America organization.
I have a question, actually. If they don't have an advisor, who oversees the distribution of the funds?
Well, they wouldn't have an advisor, I mean, we wouldn't be bringing a club if they didn't have an advisor.
They have an advisor.
Oh, and a paid advisor. Okay, I got it.
Not paid, right.
Sorry, I missed that part. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of the One America Club as a club at Hingham High School with its operation to commence during this current 2017, 2018 school year without a paid advisor.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for the public, we have to, the school committee has to approve any club who would have access to the student activity fund at the high school. So 6.6 is to receive notification of the appointments of some new paraeducators and custodian. So welcome. And then 6.7, to receive notification of the resignation of a Hingham High School paraeducator. August 31st.
Most of those appointments really were replacements for people who, we had a lot of people who we hired late, and we've had a clear number of resignations as well. Not always the same people, but, so we're still having to hire and replace. And Mary and her team did identify, they had a special ed vacancy coming up in next week or so. And that has been filled, and we're still working on the job of replacing our family and consumers that gets teacher, classroom teacher and resource teacher.
And 48 hours.
I have one thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring to the school committee's attention that I came across this article in the Patriot Ledger. There was an incident at Weymouth High School regarding a sexual assault. And I really was impressed with the statement given by the superintendent. Can I just pass this to everyone? But what was also impressive was that the, and maybe you know a little bit more about this, Dr. Gallup, that there was a Weymouth Townwide Parent Council who commended the superintendent in a statement given by herself and the police. So I just wanted to share this, because I know that the Hingham Public Schools has had a few incidences these past months. And as Chair of the Hingham Community Outreach Subcommittee, I wanted to just kind of share this with everybody, maybe learn from it.
And also clarify, because when you say that in relation to this article, you make it sound like there have been sexual assault incidents.
No, no.
So I just want everyone in the audience to know that there haven't been several sexual assault incidents in the Hingham Public Schools.
This was at the Weymouth High School, I think, just a couple of weeks ago. And it did make it to the paper, but I think it was handled really well. I even am in a Facebook group, it's called Everything Weymouth, or Weymouth is everything. And, you know, I think parents do go to social media, and they did mention this incident. But what was interesting is, you know, people were just really upset that this was taking place in our community, and I think I just wanted to share it tonight.
Yes, I think every time something happens, we can learn from what goes on. But this is helpful, I think.
No town seems to be immune to it, so.
Yes, yes. So, next is Subcommittee and Project Reports, so Community Outreach, if you guys can talk through, do a recap of some of how the announcements happened, what worked well, what we can learn.
Sorry, about what?
So-
Jamie's trying to get the note.
Oh, sorry.
I'm taking notes.
No, just for Community Outreach to consider, like, do a review of, you know, we've had, unfortunately, had a couple of incidents that were communicated from different schools and...
And I think it is important to say that schools really have a hard time dealing with the communication of such incidences, because you're dealing with minors. And because they're so, you do have to protect the confidentiality of these minors. So, yeah, it makes the communication even that more difficult.
And maybe we just need to communicate that, that there are obligations we have about confidentiality. And maybe that will also help people understand why we say certain things and don't say other things.
And it matters whether or not there's litigation that may be involved, police action, or a lot of variables that make one incident different from a different another.
Yeah.
And I always say that particularly the younger, the children, middle school children versus high school, for example, I always ask people to think about what if this were your child? Because you just never know. We have a lot of great kids that make really bad detriments that can be life-changing for them. And so the extent to which you try to protect that confidentiality, particularly for younger kids, the better for the students.
I know that some of us are actually receiving communication from one of the school's principals, because we may have kids at the school age. But the others, members of the school committee will not know anything about it. We will learn from social media. That's what's been happening lately, that we ended up reading it on Facebook. And we won't, you know, we won't know until a fellow, a member of the school committee brings to our attention. So if there is a way that, you know, incidents that happens in any of the schools that the school committee has notified, perhaps we can sort of like help in some way, you know, communicate better to the, you know, stakeholders out there.
Well, but that's why I say every incident is different.
You won't be disclosing anything that's confidential, obviously. But I think it's good for us to learn firsthand versus, you know, second or third hand.
And I think that's something we need to also work on and understand and realize in the moment that things are happening and how things are evolving. And because we can't send in an email, so then how do we reach out to everyone? And that's something that, you know, we look at definitely of making sure everybody's on the same page. So. Do you have anything more for Community Outreach?
We have a meeting on the 26th.
Yep.
School Department, 11:15. Can we check the time?
Yeah.
It's here. Right? Yes.
Were you gonna post that as a full school committee meeting? Or is it just, because I saw the posting, and it was, it's just for Community Outreach.
Well, anyone's invited to come.
Yeah.
Basically, it's because we were having the presentation done.
And it's just a presentation, so.
It's just a presentation, so if you want to come and listen to it, all school, I mean, anyone's really welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ed, do you have Long Range Planning?
Subcommittee, and then just a couple of announcements. Long Range Planning met this past 17th of October. We discussed a request from the Crew Rowing Boosters Club for fundraising, and we're working on that. We discussed the temporary portable football booster signs, and we're working on that. I met with the high school principal and talked with him about that. We started the capital leg of the 10-year master plan, and I've reached out to members of... I've reached out to a couple of people to get that ball rolling as well. By way of announcements, over the past, boy, two or three months, I've joined John Ferris, Doug Foley, and Katie Hartman with respect to warranty issues at the high school field, the stains, the stands, the installation, shopping list of things that we did. Suffice it to say that we were nitpickers, and very happy to report that we signed off on that this past, this past week. John, you want to add anything on that topic?
No.
I'm happy with the way things have been repaired, corrected. By way of announcements, this Friday, the 27th, the Hingham Boys Football Team will host a playoff game against Bishop Freon, for a playoff game, at 7:00 PM at the high school. Hingham is seeded number three. Bishop Freon is seeded number six in their division. The team that will not be named is seeded number two. So, as Yogi said, it may not yet be over, folks. And lastly, the Thanksgiving traditional game with Situate, which is a home and away series, as was mentioned earlier, will be held Wednesday evening, November 22nd, at Fenway Park. Not Thanksgiving Thursday.
Yeah.
With a 7:45 kickoff.
That's good to know, because I heard it was Thanksgiving night. And I was wondering how everyone would get out of their food coma to make it to Fenway Park for that game.
I spoke with the athletic director earlier today, and there are a couple of groups that have approached him to see if we can't have some sort of bus, busing in. Because I can just imagine, as I pointed, I suggested it to him, and he said, "Oh, way ahead of ya."
Yeah, we have some buses. We can make some money, don't we?
I just imagine driving into Boston on...
No alcohol.
Brand-new school buses, why not? Okay. Policy?
Policy, we are meeting on the 30th to continue our review of the Student Activity Account procedures. As Dot mentioned, I'm sitting down with her and Jamie and a parent who raised the kindergarten entrance age with my policy hat on. And anything that comes out of that meeting, we will bring to the 30th meeting as well.
Salary negotiations, while we're happy to report a memorandum of understanding with one bargaining unit, we still do have a few bargaining units that we are working with. And so we have many meetings scheduled over the course of the next few weeks, but are getting very close to hopefully being done with this go-round of negotiations.
And special ed, the CPAC hosted the Rights and Responsibilities Meeting, annual meeting, on, just two weeks ago, October 11th, I believe it was, or no?
The 11th.
I've lost track of time.
Tuesday, Thursday, the 11th.
And had a good turnout, and they, that was taped by H-CAM as well. So if anyone wants to have the recap of that, that is available. And one other item I wanted to bring to your attention that I learned about today in regarding a little bit of Community Outreach. The PTO presidents met today, Carrie, were you there? And so the high school PTO president brought to my attention and interest in having more monitoring of social media, of behavior on social media. And so, because felt that, you know, there's misinformation and behavior is damaging some, you know, and affecting our students. And so I said, "Wow, we would be interested in something like that." I personally would be. So since the PTO presidents were interested in putting something together, I offered to share it with the school committee tonight and the administration if we work toward, and even bringing in some other organizations of, to communicate out to the community that, you know, we expect good behavior. And as I quote George Bush, who just spoke this week, "Bullying and prejudice in our public life sets a national or local tone, provides permission for cruelty and bigotry, and compromises the moral education of children. The only way to pass along civic values is to first live up to them." So as we prepare students for their civic life, I think this would be a good initiative for us to join together. Yeah, Carrie?
Can I speak to that, because I was at the meeting?
Yeah.
It wasn't quite, it was, so when we discussed, and we're gonna talk about it more, I think, at All Time PTO on Friday, it was less about putting communication out to the community about how to behave on social media, and more about finding ways that we can kind of move the discussion forward. So it's not people on Facebook, you know, spiraling as it has been happening, but more about how can we get, maybe put together a forum and have some feedback with the school district? So people have a way to, you know, talk about things kind of like the forums that you guys put on for community outreach. And then just in action steps to follow up on it and make sure they're addressed. Because part of the frustration is that people don't feel like they're getting enough information. And so we need to kind of have some sort of forum or some way of communicating better than we are. So that was more of it than like coming up with rules for how to engage on social media.
Okay, I wasn't, and thank you for that. And as, you know, we had made a commitment to having more forums, so we'd be glad, and it'd be great to work with the PTOs to get the word out and get people there. The conversation, and this is my personal conversation with one person, and it was prior to that meeting, was not to set up rules, but to even just declare that, make a declaration that we hope all of our community would behave appropriately even on social media. So not making any rules, but even, or asking people even possibly sign a pledge to communicate appropriately on social media. So it wasn't about setting up rules. And if it's two different issues, then we can also- also explore the two different issues. But our committee has made it a goal to have more of the public forums, so, I think I can speak for everybody that we'd be glad to work with the PTOs to set those up.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Another good thing is just less social media.
Yes, I think anytime human beings, human beings actually talk in a room together, it's, it's very easy to misinterpret just typed words. There's no body language, there's no inflection, and, and that does truly make a big difference in communication.
Yeah, so, yep, so we look forward to hearing, but work with you on that, Carrie, that'd be great. Okay, next on our agenda, agenda is adjournment to executive session, not to return to open session, which I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, to, for the purpose of discussing several different issues regarding collective bargaining with different negotiation units, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position. Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.